Yep, it's 6:30, so why don't we go ahead and get started? Make a motion to open the meeting at 6:30. You got a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna open the meeting. Let me get my agenda. Has the agenda changed since I went out and sent it?
Do not believe so.
Okay. Then go pull that one. All right, so first the approval of minutes, or sorry, approval of agenda. I think we did forget to put on community input upfront, which we will add in before, or after number three. And do we have the RHR, the Art Audit? We're gonna try and get them up front also, so that they can head home. So is there any other issues that anyone sees before I make a motion?
So what do you, do you wanna move, do you wanna move citizens like after minutes? And then?
You're gonna, you're gonna add a citizen's concerns?
Well, it's at number 18 right now, so.
Yeah, but you're.
So, no, just gonna add one.
Okay.
So at number four, why don't we do RHR from seven to four, bumping everything down one? And then we'll put community comments at, right after RHR. And so that would be five, again, we'll bump it down. Jim Harrison, he is gonna be coming.
He's right behind you.
Oh, hey. Well.
Pretty stealthy.
Yeah. Do you mind if we have Jim Harrison go first? All right. So actually, let's amend that, where we're gonna go, Jim Harrison will be number four, RHR will be number five, and then community input will be number six. And then, then we'll just go down the rest of the, as written, the review of the Select Board, the liquor control, MPMA. However, that numbering falls.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Our meeting before that, let's do our administrative approval of minutes. So can I get a motion to approve minutes of June 9th, 2025?
Motion.
So move second.
Second.
All right, any issues, changes, comments? All right, I also have none, so.
Yeah, I do have one thing, okay? And I think it's given, given Dave an out. Under the bond financing of the Newtown office, the, which is item seven, okay? It says, Dave, you said that the bond financing will be enough, and I think you actually said it should be enough.
Oh, it will be enough.
It will be enough?
We're actually, we're gonna, we're coming in under budget right now, so we're looking good right now.
That's good.
Okay.
So.
Well, thank you for putting that out.
Yeah.
Good motion to accept the minutes as written for June 9th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? All right.
Okay, is this okay, or do you want me somewhere else?
Wherever you want to be.
Okay. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to, to visit with you. As I think certainly Jim knows from the past, I like to do a check-in with the various Select Boards for the four towns, you know, a couple of times a year. It's good for communication. Hopefully, I can share what we're doing or not doing up at the State House, but also get your input in terms of what are priorities for the town and how I can help. The session ended a week ago tonight. It was extended a few weeks this year because of one little issue called education. I think we all heard a message loud and clear last year that the cost of our entire education system and the subsequent property taxes was getting out of hand in many communities. So there was a commitment by the governor and the legislative leaders to see what we could do to tackle that. And that took more time than, than normal. The, for those of you who saw my email report, and if you haven't, it will be in Mountain Times this Wednesday. I titled it, my report, "A Roadmap," because that's what it is, a roadmap. It's not a be-all, end-all on education reform. There is plenty in that roadmap to take issue with and to oppose, and there's probably some things you might like. But I think there, first thing that will be done will be, a study group will be looking at the various district lines and coming up with a plan which will need to be adopted by the legislature next year. Anticipated probably 15 to 20 school districts. We currently have 119. We have 52 supervisory unions. Supervisory unions is where your, a lot of your overhead is. So things aren't the same as they once were. We have student population that continues to decline, and as a consequence, we have some very small schools. We have a lot of overhead per student. So if an agreement is not reached next year, a lot of the rest of the bill kinda goes away. We don't get the financing reform that's anticipated in here. The bill has been likened to the end of Act 60. Not now, but certainly a few years from now, if all goes according to plan. School districts will receive a fixed amount per student, and they will have to manage to that amount. There are caveats in that and adjustments based on the type of student in high school or grammar school, or whether they're non-English learners, whether they are certain income levels, below certain income levels. So there's a number of different factors. But in essence, the state will set those numbers, and the school districts will manage to it. If a school district wants to pay more, or spend more, they can ask the voters for an increase, but it will be coming out of that school district, not the statewide system. It'll be equalized, but not, and I say that adjusted for your appraisal levels, but not, not, not the current system. So, as I said, a lot of things to take issue with, but I think at the end of the day, there was an agreement reached because doing nothing was not a great option. So stay tuned, a lot of work needs to be done going forward, and we'll see where it all comes out. And things, things will be adjusted, I'm sure, along the way. So I say that, there was other, you know, major issues. Certainly, the budget, state budget this year was a little different in that we are anticipating a surplus at the end of the fiscal year. We also put aside 77 million of last year's surplus to directly help with property tax rates this year. It's dangerous when you do that, because next year you might have a, a point at which you're starting much lower, and it will look like a much higher increase. Nonetheless, it's taxpayer money to begin with. So whether you write a check back to the taxpayer, or whether you help them with the future tax bill, it's going back to the taxpayer. Anyhow, the money that we're setting aside this year, and our fiscal year's not over with, we like, probably like the town, we have another month, or a few weeks now. The, there is a big unknown factor with what's gonna happen in Washington, and what does that mean in state funds. Vermont gets about a third of its revenue from Washington. The biggest part of that is Medicaid. We currently receive from Washington $1.5 billion a year for our Medicaid program. No one is suggesting that Medicaid's going away. However, there has been all kinds of reports that it could be adjusted. A little adjustment on Medicaid means a lot of money for the state of Vermont. So we, any surplus that we get, we hopefully can use to bridge some of that, but there remains to be seen what that money, money is. We did a new housing infrastructure bill. You folks are familiar with TIFs, because you've done one. And a lot of people think we need to do something specific for housing, and so we're doing what's called a CHIP, a Community Housing Investment Program, where you could do a housing development, and actually, similar to a TIF, you could do, use the future tax receipts to help you with financing the necessary roads, sewer, water, you name it, to help us develop more housing. So there was a lot of contention on that, but at the end of the day, an agreement was reached. Healthcare costs, another big issue. I'm not even gonna suggest that the legislature fixed healthcare, because we didn't, but we did give more authority to the Green Mountain Care Board. Vermont has high health insurance costs, period. Some have suggested we're the highest in the country. Vermont's a rural state, so it's a challenge. But on the other hand, you know, we've gotta look at all that. We gotta give the tools to Green Mountain Care Board, so that hopefully we can help going forward. And then, public safety, I'll mention, it was one of the governor's priorities. The legislature did not do a lot in that area. There was a lot of interest in doing some kind of bail reform, so we didn't have so much what people think as catch and release, but that fell short. We did postpone raising the age for another two years, so it remains to be seen where that is. And I say raising the age, under Vermont law, that has been pushed back several times, 19-year-olds become treated as juveniles, and then 20-year-old as juvenile. Vermont's out on an island with those age increases. So anyhow, it's been postponed for another two years. There's, the governor has suggested just repealing that change, I mean, the, the change to 19 and 20 and 21, but for now, it's been postponed. And then, lastly, I'll mention that we had a few targeted tax reductions. One was a exemption for military pensions for most Vermonters that receive a military pension. Not all, there are income levels on it. And then there was a slight tweak to the threshold at what social security income won't get taxed, and a child tax credit was increased to age six. And there was a change in the earned income tax credit for those that qualify. So that's pretty much the session. The legislature passed 82 bills. Four of those were vetoed. The legislature, given the new political makeup, none of the vetoes were tested for an override. So if the governor vetoed something, it stood, the bill was done. So, and I, I think legislative leaders needed, knew that. I will say, and this was, came from a media report, but I think the change in the dynamic, politically, up in Montpelier was positive from my perspective, because if something wasn't bipartisan, it wasn't going anywhere. Wasn't gonna be one party or the other saying, "This is the way we're doing it." The speaker mentioned in one report where she has spent more one-on-one time with the governor this session than she had in any previous terms as speaker. I think that says a lot. That doesn't mean they always agree, because they don't. But the fact that they're talking and recognize they have to talk to get things done, I think is positive. So I will stop there. If you or anyone else has questions for me, I'm happy to answer. Or if you have issues that you want me to keep in mind going forward, I'm happy to do that as well.
Forward, have any questions?
Are they cutting down the 52 supervisors, or is that going through, or it's not going through?
I think most people believe that the supervisory unions will line up with the new school districts. So if, if we end up with, pick a number, 15 school districts, you probably have 15 supervisory unions, one for each district. In Killington's case, you belong to Mountain Views. Mountain Views has its own supervisory union. In Chittenden, where I live, Chittenden and Mendon have their own school district, but their supervisory union is part of Otter Valley, it's called Rutland Northeast, but includes Brandon and Pittsburgh, and a few other towns. So that supervisory union covers a couple of the school districts. So I think that's gonna change and enforce that. Supervisory union, I mean, they serve a necessary role, but you have to, it begs the question, does Vermont with 80,000 students need 52 of them?
Well, I think we have more supervisors than all of upstate New York.
You know what? We, we may, we may. And, and there's been a lot suggesting that, you know, we can't, we can't go from 119 school districts down to 15. The governor had proposed five, and that's, that's not, probably not gonna happen. Hawaii has one school district. So it can be done.
Yeah, well.
And I'm not suggesting.
What I noticed is, like in the Woodstock thing, I've been at some meetings, the volunteers set up the budget, set up the whole thing. What do these supervisors really do? I mean, 52 of them, you know what I mean? You have boards of that, of people that are marketing paid, doing their job. Which is not good. The other, second question I had was the Health Home Act, did that come into play at all?
The what?
Health Home Act, where you have 100 students, if you go down to 50, you only lose 3.1% of your funding, which goes the opposite way. If you have 50, that goes to 100, you only get 3.1% more funding, which is kinda ridiculous.
There's gonna be a transitional period. The new financing is a lot different than what we have today, because your state's gonna say, "You're gonna get X amount per student, you manage."
So it's not going into a pool on the Act 60 anymore?
Once this is fully implemented, Act 60 is gone.
Good.
You will get, which is what most states do, they have a foundation formula. You know, they do all their studies and say it costs $15,000 to educate a student. That's what you're gonna get. If you have 100 students, you'll get 15,000 times 100 students. Now, that number gets adjusted based on certain criteria, but that's what the school district will have to manage to.
And where are we at with that, first through?
Mountain Views is one of the highest spendings.
Which is what?
I don't.
Eighteen, something.
Eighteen, something. Yeah. And, and quite frankly, I, my inbox was loaded with educators and parents, especially from Woodstock, that they've chosen to pay more and raise more money. And their fear is that's gonna be reduced. The difference is, under Act 60, is the way our formula works is, you wanna spend an extra $100, about $25 of that is raised locally. The other $75, give or take, is put in the pool, which means everybody else pays for that extra spending. And it had to be sort of set up that way to get at the court decision back a number of years ago when Act 60 was first formed. So equal opportunity throughout the state. So it, it gets complicated. A lot of things will change, and that has people very nervous. But I'm of the belief.
I don't think the taxpayers are nervous about it.
Well, I'm of the belief something had to change, because
What did with you?
It was gonna get unsustainable with the spending and the taxes that result, so.
Devin?
Jim?
Hi.
So between the state property tax going up and the town of Killington taxes going up, it's almost 20% increase in the tax bill that's coming beginning of July. And a lot of people are considering, or have already put their houses on the market, or they're selling them by themselves. And a lot of people who have, who have interest in owning an Airbnb.
Sure.
And, so they're not residents, and they're using the, their property as, as a business income. So there are rules for Airbnbs in Killington and extra taxes. And then Woodstock has another set of rules and taxes and regulations. Could there be a statewide Airbnb special tax setup? And because a lot of these people who have Airbnbs, they don't, they're, they don't belong to the fire department. They don't, they're volunteers. They don't, they don't coach in Little League baseball. They don't volunteer in the school, because they live in New Jersey, and New York, and Connecticut, and Massachusetts. And so it affects us all, the Airbnbs. And from my experience with having Airbnbs in my neighborhood now, instead of having neighbors, they, these Airbnb clients, they come in on, on Friday afternoon, and I watch them. They don't have golf clubs, they don't have skis, they don't have mountain bikes. They come with cases of beer and alcohol. And by 11, by, by 7 o'clock in the evening, they're pretty well lit. And they're noisy.
Okay, Devin, if I could interject here, a couple of things happening. First of all, right now, we have a homestead rate, which is what the residents pay. And we have a non-homestead rate, which is everything else. Commercial, rental apartments, second homeowners, they all pay the same rate. That is a statewide rate, and it doesn't vary. In most towns, the way it's set up, it's actually set up higher for non-residential statewide than it is for the homestead. It's not that way in Killington, because Killington is part of Mountain Views, and the school spending is higher than average. So it, it's a little bit of an inverse. I don't know how much of a difference there is. Now, going forward, the plan does call for a separate category for, it's a new residential, but it's not, it's, it would address second homeowners, okay?
Yeah.
That would have a separate classification.
Yeah.
Not determined whether or not it will be a different rate, or whether or not how it's defined. But the anticipation is that it could be a separate rate that may or may not be higher than, say, a commercial property or a rental property and/or the homestead. So I would just say, hold on to that thought, because that definitely is on the plate, and it is written in there to come up with a definition of a second homeowner, okay?
There is a percentage from Airbnb that.
What's that?
When you do an Airbnb, there is a percentage that goes to the state, too.
That's true.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not arguing for or against.
No, me neither, but I'm saying they do take a little action out of that.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Yeah, they do. In fact, last year, there was an extra 3% on the room stacks.
That's what I think Debbie was asking, Jim.
Yeah.
For, there's a 9% rooms in the old stacks, plus there's a 3% extra for Airbnbs.
Right.
For hotels.
Right.
So an Airbnb in the town of Killington is paying 12% of their income.
Right.
So there is a charge.
Yeah, there is. Yeah.
Not, not every out-of-state homeowner in Killington rents out their places as Airbnbs. But there are Airbnbs that.
Airbnb is, I, I hate the word Airbnb. It's just a brand. Anybody that rents their house for more, for any days, has to pay 12% of their, okay? For that, my idea, Airbnb, VBRO, anything else, they're paying.
Charter rentals, right.
Is, is there any questions online? Nope. Excellent. Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, no, thank you. It's, it's a, it's a work in progress, and I totally understand the anxiety. We've all chosen to live in certain communities because of, whether it be the schools, whether it's the tax structure, a variety of reasons, the quality of life that you all experience. So anytime you change that, it can make people anxious, and I, I get it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Work in, work in progress. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
We will see you. What's that? Are you, are you running this year, or are you?
Uh, this is not election year, thank you.
So we'll see you when we see you.
We'll still see you at the transfer space, you know?
All right. And move on to RHR, our audit company, if you'd like to, or if you'd like to.
Sure, so Ron Smith and Samantha Rockbills are here today. I invited them to come and kinda get a jump on FY25 and brief you guys on what was in the FY24 audit. I know both of them have some information on what they've discovered today. We have some TIF information and a few other things, so. Yeah, they got to spend the day with us at the town office and hung around for the meeting to fill you guys in.
Get to spend some local time, and Abby's back from vacation, too.
That's right. Yeah.
So I'm Ron Smith, Samantha Rockbills, she's the brains, so. She's the coward and doesn't wanna talk, so I'm really talking. We do, so I've been doing it for 35 years. We do, it's all we do for a living. We audit, you know, government, you know, schools, counties, and municipalities, for sure. And I believe we do 2/3 of all of them in Maine, and I believe probably close to half, you know, in the state of Vermont, including probably 90% of all your school systems that he was talking about in the state of Vermont. So we, so we understand the business. So, and, and the one thing that makes Killington unique is up until this past year, there were 12 dist- districts in the state of Vermont, and you were the 12th and final TIF district. I think they might have added 13, you know, this year, 13, which was around.
Wrong, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so anyway, so that makes it unique. And to kinda speak to Dave's point on 24 and closing the books and starting 25, the one thing that we're still doing, because that was your first active year, you know, of your TIF district, the Vermont Economic Policy Council has a, agreed-upon procedures to audit the TIF. You know, so that's one of the engagements that you guys have authorized us to do. So not only are we getting a jump on the 25 audit, kinda seeing where you're landing here, you know, between now and next week, we're also auditing the TIF district. And we're certainly gonna bring some recommendations, you know, for, there's actually a seven-page comprehensive document, you know, that starts with that. Abby's on vacation, we've got a lot of the information, we've got a lot of questions. I think it's gonna be more housekeeping, rearrangement of your books to kind of accommodate what Bepsi's looking for, so that we can go back and capture all the properties and, you know, the, 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 the mission, you know, of what these, what this TIF district, with all the projects in it, you know, has, you know, has set out to do with its plan that it put in state and got approved by the state. And I think simply said, you have a lot of TIF districts and activity going, a lot of TIF district projects with one TIF district with a lot of activities. And within the TIF district and the, and the activities of those projects, you've got non-TIF districts and non-TIF, you know, activity. So we're trying to make sure that you can clearly differentiate between the two. You know, there's sort of a blend, you know, of how it's set up here right now. So we're gonna be, you know, certainly advising you, based on, like, one of the first compliance supplements is to make sure that we can identify what's TIF and what's not TIF. That's gonna be the first, that's the first thing we've looked at really today, and bring you some, some, some suggestions on how to be more, be more organized, transparent, you know, as far as what's TIF, what's not TIF, you know, based on. as far as what's TIF, what's not TIF, you know, based upon, based upon really, you know, complementing the plan, you know, as approved for you all. And that's where we see, we see some adjustments coming, you know, to your books, we see some adjustments coming to the TIF, we've already seen some movement, you know, some corrections, this posting what's going on right now. You know, the debt, you know, you've had a few different issues of debt coming through this town, whether short-term borrowings or long-term borrowings. You've got a lot of financing partners in this TIF. We just want to make sure and because you have to make sure that what's TIF stays TIF, what's non-TIF gets pulled out of TIF. And there's some work to be done for Killington. And this is really the first major year 25, you know, of all the activity that's gone on with $60 million project, so, yeah. So, that's where we're at right now financially. I think you guys are in good shape. You know, it's just like I say, we just, we just don't want any, you know, we audit three TIFs in the state and we just don't want any bang-bang state auditor, you know, could you explain this? Want to be able to explain it, you know, and there's some, like I say, I just think that there's some easy adjustments you can make to allow yourself to do so, so.
Excellent. Thank you, Jim.
That's about it.
Anything you want to add?
I'm good.
She's good. So, we'll be back. We'll be back too. We're not just here tonight to hit the talk and run. You know, we're here just to tell you what we're doing, 25, got a jump on that, TIF, agreed upon procedures, just to make sure you've got this pointed in the right direction. We'll help you get that, work with Abby and Dave to, you know, to do so. And when she's back, we've got a to-do list for her, so.
Yeah. Well, she's getting some vacation before...
Yeah, right. I think she is too. Any questions of us?
Any from the board? Nope.
We'll be seeing you later on this fall too. So, and you'll be getting our report on the TIF too. We'll give that to Dave, work with Dave and Abby to vet that first.
Thanks, good seeing you guys.
Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Somebody listed this iPad on Zoom?
I think it is Mark. He told me that last time.
All right. So, that's going to bring us to then our first community input. I do ask that if it is any, if the question is anything about something that's on the item, I'm going to interrupt you, say hey, we'll stop by that one where on the item since we will have discussion periods after most, if not all, items. So, first round, community input in the audience first. Does anyone have any questions or items to bring right now? Go on the back end.
I'm still on the audit game, so you guys really didn't answer the question when you would think about having an order. You said Mark Dakota's going to do it, but Mark Dakota works at town, or didn't work for the town. So, I would like to see a third party do it. And I'd like each one of you to say if you're into it or not into it, because personally, I'll get a petition together and put it up for voting. Because I haven't seen anyone in this town that is for that.
Well, no, I'm just saying, can you, sorry, I forgot my name.
George.
You also say your name.
Yes. George Frank.
George.
Sorry. But I'd just like to hear from you guys and what you think about it, are you going to put it on your agenda?
Yeah. I think that we, I know that you answered it last time of your beliefs. I will second that. I'd like to see what this turns up and then address it because it is a cost, it's a town. So, again, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, I'm not saying we should. I don't think we're informed enough to make that decision yet.
So, should I go forward with the petition and get it up to a vote?
If you'd like. Hopefully, we're going to make that decision before...
I would like you to, but it seems like it keeps going on the back burner to me.
I would just like to say that most, pretty much all of you, running for office stated demand an audit outside third party, independent. I didn't run. That's what pretty much everybody ran here on, that's all.
So, I said that at the last meeting, I wanted to wait a couple of weeks, see what turned up from this. If it doesn't bear the fruit we're looking for, then I'm all about an outside audit.
But, so this is...
What are you swearing for?
No, 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 this is, what I'm getting at is, is like, when someone says, I want to wait a few weeks to see if it agrees with me, that's not...
No, 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 don't go there.
You said you want to see how it's...
Said I want to see if it bears fruit. What comes out of this.
Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Chair, could I add something?
Go ahead.
So, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
George.
So, George, the two folks that just left are HR Smith, they are the town auditors that the town contracts with to do the audits every year. I worked with them in previous towns and asked them if they could start the FY25 so that we're ending in a couple of weeks here, start it earlier. So, they were with us all day and we really wanted them to jump into like TIF and projects. Mark was brought in on a voluntary basis actually to help us to get some of our balance sheets in order for the end of the year, look at if there needed to be adjusting entries that would go to, because we can't do adjusting entries like the, no one in the office can, the auditors, the two that just sat there are the only ones that can do it. So, we did ask them to get a jump on it to start the audit sooner than later, so that's why they were here. They usually don't start until like...
Were they doing TIF or a town?
They're doing everything. That's the whole thing. So, so when you, when you have, when you hire the auditors, they have, like, most towns should do an annual audit. And so, you know, there's a cost to that. And then when you have an expenditure on a project, which I think now the threshold is $750,000, which is one pay rack up here, that, the state says now you need to do a single audit as well as on top of your regular audit of your general fund and everything. So, that, so they're going to, they'll be doing both.
But what I was saying, we had other auditors come in and they said there's many chapters and there's many chapters unanswered in here, which is not really an answer to an audit. You know, this is previous meetings before you were even here, this is years ago, but the answers...
It's the same auditor that was just sitting here today.
So, we're hoping, is what they do, and I've actually asked them to, and it's more of a good learning thing for all of us in the office too, they do a management letter. So, and that's when they want to make sure you're following your best practices. If there's, you know, obviously issues they see, that comes to, and that's in the management letter as well, and more so than the audit itself, it's basically the, here's how you need to do things the right way, you know, in the following years. So, so that's really what we're waiting for. And I mean, we probably won't see that until the first of, like, you know, like in January when they've completed the whole. So, you know, they usually pull just like certain items, like, they'll pull 50 lines out of our, out of, you know, our, out of NEMERIC, which is what we use for our accounting.
And is that available to the town?
The audit? Yeah, yeah, sure. It's a hard copy. If you want one, stop by the office, I can give you one for, you know, FY24. So, they'll start doing, when the books close out on June 30th, they'll do the last 365 days. So, yeah, stop by and I've got them for previous years too, you're more than welcome to take copies.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
I'm very concerned about the increase in taxes between the state going up, just under 8% and the town going up almost 13%. So, that's 20% increase in taxes and there's a lot of older people in this town. And when you retire at 62 or 65 or whatever, you make plans for the, your costs and, you know, there's a lot of people that are just, it's going to impact their survivability in the town. And so, I'm concerned about the increase in taxes and what people are going to have to do when they get their tax bill in July. And, you know, it's, it's something that I'd like to see the board consider all the budget and what they can cut out. I mean, people who have huge tax increase, they've got to cut on, cut on different budgets. And I'd like to see the town cut budgets as well as what the residents have to cut because you have to pay your taxes or you can't live here. And there are people that have lived in this town their whole lives and, you know, it's 1,400 people and it's very sad when you see that people have to sell their house because they, they can't pay the taxes. So...
Well, we will, when we get the taxes, we will...
Under control. Yeah. I mean, 20% increase.
I would just like to say that when the education tax rate, I don't know if we have it yet, okay? But when the education tax rate is 35% of our tax bill, and so, if, and I don't think we're at 13% on the municipal tax rate, but even if we were at 13% of municipal tax rate, you can't just take 15% of your tax bill and say it's 13% and add 8% to it and say we're at 20%. I just, I just don't, I just don't like it when we say things that, you know, are going to scare other people. It is, if it is a 20% increase, which I think it is, the majority of it is, is the education tax rate. You can't take 15% of something and say it's 13% up and then 85% of something and 8% up and then call it 21%. You just can't do that. So, that's all. I want that on record.
Okay, I'm mostly concerned with the municipal taxes have gone up.
We'll, we'll address that when we come to the budget season and start doing it. I think we have some ideas about, hopefully not just increasing taxes, but, you know, other revenue sources, or different taxes, not just property.
It's just my two cents.
Thank you, Deb. All right. Anyone online? Nope. All right. So, let's start getting into...
Review the rest of it?
We have, yeah, review, thank you. Review draft of select board procedure. We re- from the one that we got last time. I know Bill made some suggestions, I went and cleaned up some language, so I'd like to make a motion to discuss the, or a motion for, move forward with the select board rules of procedure.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right. Does anyone have any comments about the changes?
Number four.
Yeah.
Number four. Review draft of select board rules of procedure.
Oh, are you talking about on the email?
Yeah.
Sorry.
This is the agenda that was sent out Friday.
And I think he's asking if the, if the draft was in the email.
I don't see it on the, on the email. And I wrote an email saying that I was away on vacation for Thursday and Friday, so, I mean, if you want, can I just take a look?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Just so I can look.
No problem.
Can you tell me where you made changes?
This, this was, this was added here, okay, based on going, based on allowing board members to talk to one another with the five-member select board.
I think there's also put in there in number one, there was reference to a vice chair and some...
Okay, so number one, yeah.
Yeah, number one put in a reference to a vice chair.
If the chair is not going to be in, I agree with that. So, then this is here, number 11.
Yeah.
The chair may appoint other board members to research and analyze on the agenda and report their findings to the board at a later date. For the three-member select board, one board member may... Yeah, so that's automatic anyway? You can just have it in writing?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
And I think the one other thing was, we took out that we would like to have seconds now.
Yeah, yeah.
Because, again, there's five of us.
Do you want seconds or not?
Yeah.
You want a second? Okay.
But, again, everything else is the same.
Sorry, I just didn't, I didn't...
You're on here.
So, Linda did send out two. I don't think it was either one of us.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Agenda, but, that's all right.
I see a comparative budget, I see River Road culverts, I see golf, Rim Road culvert, paving bid, correction, Richardson, WA, whatever.
I don't believe it's in there.
DWSRF, that's on the second one. And then on the first group, I see select board meeting, select board meeting minutes, Killington raise, municipal request for tier one, Richardson WA amendment, Killington forward, Mike Burke.
Yeah, it wasn't there.
I'm good with it.
You're good with it? All right, so then...
I'll make a motion to accept it as presented.
Second.
Excellent. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Sign the shiny colorful version.
So, I guess with that, and make a motion to, to, sorry, to amend the agenda again to put in a vote for vice chair?
I made a motion to accept as presented in there and I think the vice chair is in there. To select what rules of procedures, that's the sheet.
Yeah.
I have a motion.
Oh, no, so, yeah, so, but did you make one to, to then vote for it too?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. I thought you made a motion on just passing this, or did you make a second motion to move to vote for a vice chair?
Well, the vice chair, no, I...
You moved to select this, yeah.
And we haven't had this vote yet.
To select this.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, I'm sorry. So, all in favor of the new procedure?
Aye.
Aye.
Now you can come up with a vice chair.
Sorry. Now I have a motion to elect a vice chair?
I'm going to make a motion for the guy right next to me to go.
Oh, can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, all in favor for Bill to be vice chair?
Aye.
I recuse.
You can recuse yourself.
Yeah, I guess.
Here you go, John.
Keep it easy.
All right. So, we put that in the budget and then we're...
Vice chair and run out.
Yeah, no, this is when I leave. I believe we are down to board of liquor control. Thank you.
Hi.
Peggy.
So, tonight, I just have in at Long Trail, they're renewing their first and third class liquor.
I'll make a motion to get a town clerk who's in at Long Trail for their first and third.
Can I get a second?
Okay.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. That's all you have, Peggy?
Yes.
Excellent. Then we moving down to MPM review, Killington Road reconstruction project.
Okay, so Lisa is on...
Here, I'm here.
Oh, she, wow, that was weird, you were there earlier. So, Lisa's here to, I'll just give a quick, you know, introduction here. So, you know, you folks all know the raise grant is back in play again.
I don't think they do.
Oh, okay. Well, the raise grant is back in play again. And we've met with all the, you know, the parties, the state and the, you know, Dubois and King, and Lisa's here to fill you in on the rest of it.
Yeah. I, I'll just, I'm just going to take a step back since we have new select board members, if you don't mind. I think everyone knows in '23, we were awarded a $25 million raise grant for phases two through four of Killington Road. When we started the construction project, I'm sorry, the contract process, the representative at the Federal Highway Administration said, there's really two ways the town could go. The town could contract directly with the Federal Highway Administration or the Federal Highway Administration can contract with Vtrans and Vtrans would then contract as a sub recipient to the town. We talked about it internally, we talked about it with the Select Planning Commission, Select Board, we weighed the pros and cons. One of the big pros is that if you contract, if they contract through Vtrans and we're a subcontractor, this is a reimbursement grant. So, the money, we have to pay the money, we get reimbursed. The reimbursement process is done locally in Monpelia versus going down to Washington, which means much quicker turnaround. So, you know, that was one of the reasons and the other reason is that it was just a big project. I spoke to some other recipients of raise grants, South Burlington, and they all felt that working through Vtrans made a lot of sense. So, we went to the select board, the select board agreed at the time of that process and so we let Vtrans know. The Vtrans process requires that the town bring on a municipal project manager and that's an outside party that really will manage the process for the town. We went through the process that the state Vtrans requires, we had a selection committee, the selection committee reviewed the firms that were pre-qualified by Vtrans and made a decision to go forward with Dubois and King and specifically Ken Robey. a decision to go forward with Dubois and King, and specifically Ken Robey, and Ken is on tonight, if you want to meet him. We were, they provided us a contract, we were ready to go forward when the grant got paused. There's Ken. About a month ago, we received an email from a representative at the Federal Highway Administration saying, good news, the grant is back in play, let's meet and kind of pick up the pieces. So we met the town, Federal Highway, V-Trans, and reviewed the contract. We agreed on the contract, this contract between the Federal Highway and V-Trans, but we're a party to it, and it got sent back to Washington. That contract is now illegal, and we're waiting for it. We've been told, you know, it should be quick, but, you know, I don't know. In the interim, before the grant got put on hold, the federal government did approve what they call an advance notice, an advance authorization to spend money up to $1.8 million, which means that any money we spend on hiring a municipal project manager, hiring a design engineer, will get reimbursed, provided a contract gets signed. So we're now kind of back at this process again, where we'd like to retain a municipal project manager. The one thing that the Federal Highway has not done is changed the schedule. So the schedule is incredibly aggressive. We have to have the funds fully obligated by June or July of 2028, and to do that, we don't have to have the construction done, but we do have to have the engineering done, easements acquired, and ready to move forward. We have until 2033 to fully complete construction, but we have to obligate the funds, which means that we have an incredible amount of work, because when we originally envisioned this project, I kind of thought we would design phase two, build phase two, design, build three, but that's not going to happen now. We have to design the whole thing, we have survey work we have to do, we have design work we have to do, we have right of ways we have to negotiate, so it's a tremendous amount of work. So we're here tonight to talk to the select board about how you want to proceed, do we want to move forward and bring on the MPM, do we want to wait until we have a signed contract? We talked maybe about, you know, anyway, so I'd like to talk about it. We have a contract from, which I know was in your packet, I hope was in your packet.
Oh, it was.
I didn't send the packet out, so I can't, but for Dubois and King, and their contract is for the first two phases of the project. Phase one is project definition, and phase two is really kind of the meets and bolts, which is managing, design permitting, and right of way. Oh, we also have to go through the NEPA process. They come in with a.
Lisa, if they turn to page 10 in this, they can see the, you guys can see the
Thank you.
schedule, and that might help you.
Thanks, I'm sorry, I'm talking quickly because we have a large agenda.
Sometimes visuals are nice, you know.
So I don't mean to be like speeding through it, but I know you have a big agenda, so I'm just trying to kind of bring everyone, and we have new members who haven't been involved. So their total cost for phase A and B is $357,700,000, but that is an estimated fee. They are going to actually bill us based on, you know, time and expense, not, you know, it's not a fixed fee contract. So we think that this is a kind of worst-case contract, or very conservative, and the actual numbers will come in less, because we think that some of the right-of-way and easement negotiation is better done in-house, and so that Ken probably won't be involved day to day in kind of getting all the easements, and this number kind of anticipates that. So I do think there will be savings, but I was like, let's stick to a number that represents kind of, you know, I don't want to use worst case, because it's not worst case, but the high end, thank you. Remember, this will get reimbursed, the grant is for $25 million, we do have a $1 million contribution that we're going to have to come up with over time. We've talked about different ways, Abby and I have kind of strategized and Dave a little bit about different ways to come up with those funds, but this $357,000 will largely get reimbursed, assuming the contract gets signed. So there you have it. I'm happy to answer questions. Ken is here, if you guys want to talk about it.
Who would have to sign the contract?
Excuse me?
Who would we be asking to sign the contract, Dave?
I believe the select board needs to sign this one.
I'll make a motion for the select board to move forward to sign the town and Killington Ramon agreement for municipal project management services with Du Bois and King, Inc., Killington Raze 7, Killington Road reconstruction project.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, discussion?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So the simplest way to think about this is, this is the paperwork, the design drawings, the site surveys, the surveying, all before construction begins.
But this is not for that. This is for the municipal project manager. We then have to go out. We then have to go out. Our number one, first thing we're going to do is go out and hire a design engineer. Dubois and King is not our design engineer, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear.
Yeah.
The way the state process works, and, you know, there are the pros and cons of going to V-Trans, it's a little more bureaucratic. We're required to hire a municipal project manager who cannot be the design engineer. We then have to hire a design engineer, probably go through an RFP process, definitely go through an RFP process. Well, you could circumvent it a little bit by going through the at the ready process. That's why I'm saying probably. And then we also have to hire an independent construct, construction, what is it, Ken? Construction?
Construction inspection.
Although I've been told that it might get a waiver, so that it's, but we're also going to have to hire a construction inspection firm.
But can we take the lead on all of that bid process? Is that correct, or is that still being done in the town?
So.
Yeah, so that's a choice that you have, so either I can do it, or you can do it on your own. So we have a lot of flexibility in here, we kind of determine things as we belong, as to what makes the most sense and is most efficient for the project.
I think we're hoping, and Lisa can correct me if I'm wrong, we've had a couple meetings with Ken and with V-Trans and Federal Highway, that, you know, we're going to try to keep, like Abby, Lisa, myself, Ken, and, you know, the Scots, at V-Trans through this whole process anyway, so, like, Ken will be helping us to, you know, pick design engineers. So pretty much everything through prelim, we'll be chatting with them.
Okay.
We don't really, I mean, we have limited in-house capability.
Like, we'll probably do right away, you know, I mean, we can do that, and then, you know, we'll get, we'll probably, I'm sure we'll all rate the bid results and RFPs and everything.
Of course, of course.
So this is $350,000, it's over part of 2025, all of 2026, and just a touch of 2027? Like, that's, so that tentative?
Three years.
Do we have that in the budget already?
Probably not. Well, I think when this budget, and Jim's the only one that was sitting here, but I think when the budget was made, the raise grant was not even in the books at that point, right?
We really have to realize too, is that this is part of the TIF data. So the $1 million is covered by the TIF, and we had said, and it still stands, that at some point it's going to get paid back, and we're going to borrow. We put out to all the voters in the Public Information Act thing, that we would be up to $2 million worth of, and this is really saying that there's $24 million worth of road, $25 million, $24 million worth of roadwork being done, and as Lisa was saying also, it's like, we had the choice of either going with this MPM, whatever, or we could do it all on our own, but then we would have to be sending the bills to the federal government in Washington DC. This way here, we're with V-Trans, that they secure all the funds upfront, I believe, they get the money up, and then they can start putting it from there. So would you rather deal with V-Trans in our own state, or would you want to start sending bills to Ramon, after Washington DC?
Patrick, we'd still like have to do interim financing before, you know, while we're submitting.
But that's.
I was going to say, is the funding mechanism the TIF?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, for the most, I mean, it would, you know, it's like any other project, we'd still have to do interim financing and, you know, work. Like, there is so many time that we can do on that, so I think right away is going to help, I mean, I don't think, I don't think we can quite get a million dollars out of right away, but, you know, so.
Okay, cool.
It's the same thing like the war.
Yeah.
But if we get Ken on board, we could start the process of going out for an RFP for a design engineer, and that's really important, because the schedule, it sounds like you have, it's far away, but honestly, I mean, you know, we're still working on plans for 1A.
We were already going this way, and we already signed off on this way as a town.
It was just, then it went away.
It just didn't have, it went away.
Right.
We had the option, Lisa, right, that they told, well, V-Trans told us that, hey, we think it's going to stay.
Yeah.
You guys can start now, and that was like six months ago, and the board said no.
Right, because we have the advanced, we have the authorization to pre-spend before there's a signed contract. So anything we spend now will get reimbursed as soon as the contract gets signed, but that's, you know, there is that element of risk, right? Hopefully not.
Okay. I do presume that one of the real deliverables of this is the start of construction, which has to occur by June 30th. I presume that's really what this is all about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And that Ken, and through his work, okay, will be telling us if that date's a real date?
It has to be.
Well, I know it has, no, 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 it has to be a real date, but isn't a real date, they're two different things. June 30th, 2028. Yeah. Otherwise.
You just said June 30th, you didn't say.
Yeah, otherwise the grant gets.
That's not negotiable.
Right, that's not a negotiable date, right.
We've been told, you know, we thought it disappeared, maybe we'd come back with an extra, they would have extended the time, but they haven't, so, you know, we have to assume that there's no extension, and we have to move forward.
Okay.
You know, the money's, you don't want to lose that obligation, so.
Here's a question you may not be able to answer, and it might not have anything to do with this contract. How do these dates align with what's going on with our friends up on the mountain in the village?
As far as.
Wish we knew.
It's really independent of it in a way.
I mean, we're, yeah, we're building the road.
Yeah, but if the road, how do they get trucks up there if there's no road?
There'll be a road.
Well, the road will be in this current shape that it's in right now, so this is, this is from where contract.
We just made the roads closed, but we're going to build, we're still going to build it in phases.
Yeah, okay.
And so there will have to be a phasing plan, and there have to be, you know.
You're thinking big trucks coming through.
I'm trying to, yeah. Is that one of the items that Ken has on his list to coordinate with?
That's just part of the project.
Just part of the project, okay, good.
Yes. Mainest traffic will be a primary issue with the design firm.
Okay, good, great.
All right, any other discussion? No. All right, so I believe there's a motion on board or on the floor to accept the agreement for municipal project management services with Dubois and King for the Killington Raze road reconstruction. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nope, none? And no? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you, Lisa.
Sure.
Which one are we signing?
Do you have a copy that you want to sign?
I don't have anything to sign, yeah.
Well, I do have a, I do have.
You need us to sign something, or is it?
I haven't filled in the date, but.
Well, I made a motion for the board to sign.
Yeah, I thought we had something to sign too.
Yep.
We don't have a contract yet, so.
Well, we do, I do have a contract from them, but they haven't signed it.
For Dean, Ken.
We prefer them to sign it first, and then we sign it.
It's up to you.
I think you can go individually, when it's ready, we can go individually and sign it.
I mean, you could sign this now, I think I'd rather see what Dubois and King sign first.
The motion was on for the board to sign, I didn't say for today. You just got to get it done by.
Yeah.
No, 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 that should, no.
Yeah, okay, so we will sign it.
We'll get an email to say stop and.
I think just, there's just one, there's just one person that signs it, so it's probably just Patrick is the chair of the select board.
Okay, so do you want to amend the motion to?
I'm going to withdraw my motion. Can you withdraw the second?
Second.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion for the chair of the board to sign the municipal.
Project manager.
Project manager contract with Du Bois and King.
Can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right.
And when it's ready, we'll let, I'll let you know.
So I'm, yes, I'm on the hook for 357.
You are too, because you said.
Probably more like the 25 now.
You said.
That's why we have auditors.
All right. Okay, next item is going to be tier 1B designation.
So Will is here to discuss this, this has been kind of a hot topic in the county for a little while, and.
I was going to say, this has been a pretty, pretty hot topic across the whole state. This ties into the new land use law, Act 181, that was passed, that was passed back in June 2024 last year, and it was the biggest revisions that's been done to Act 250 since Act 250 was created. And so stepping back even a little further, we actually had a special select board meeting about a month ago, where Devin from Rutland Regional Planning Commission came and presented to the town and to the select board at the time, the future land use map and some revisions that they were going over as they're re-adopting the regional plan. And so what you're looking at in front of you is a municipal request for a tier 1B designation, and so what that essentially means is that with the passing of Act 181, they are moving Act 250 to a location-based jurisdiction, rather than just project-based. And so with that future land use map that we looked at, I actually have a copy of the revised version, because we've gone through a little bit of a revision process with that future land use map. The regional planning commissions across the state are redoing these future land use maps, they've always created them, but they never actually really held any, they never really meant a whole lot in the past. And so now they mean a lot, now they have a lot of weight to them, because now, if, based on the new location-based jurisdictions, there is, they are highlighting downtown centers, village areas, planned growth areas, and areas in town that are designated as such, like a village area, can gain exemption from Act 250 if the town applies and is successful in their application with being considered, what's considered a tier 1A or 1B town. Tier 1B, that you're, the application that you're kind of looking at in your board packets, tier 1B is a much smaller exemption than tier 1A. Tier 1A is fully exempt, but that application won't be released until January 2026, so that is forthcoming in the future. But tier 1B is essentially a request to our regional planning commission that will apply on behalf of Killington to the land use review board, and what tier 1B does is it gives exemptions of 50 units or less on 10 acres or less from having to go through Act 250 process. So.
For areas within a village, only for areas that are within the designated village area.
Yeah, so any land that is designated as village area, and Killington does have a designated village area, any land within that area, any project that proposes 50 units or less on 10 acres or less would be exempt from having to go to Act 250. This does not have any impact on town zoning or town land use regulations, it's a completely separate, completely separate map, but it does give that exemption. So this is the tier 1B request. We're hoping to move forward with requesting Rutland Regional Planning Commission to apply on our behalf as a tier 1B town to pursue these exemptions. I imagine that in the future, when the tier 1A application is released, that is going to be something that we're also going to pursue, considering we have a lot of projects going on, especially in some of these, you know, these areas that we're looking to see growth. Our village area is essentially the entirety of Killington Road up until the snowshed, the snowshed law.
Up to Vale, actually, Vale Road. So it includes the first portion of the village, doesn't include any of the, doesn't include the Ramshead subdivision, it doesn't include any of the development along the ski slopes, that was something Rutland Regional felt very strongly, didn't belong in a village area.
Yeah, I thought of the designated village area, like the Killington Village built Great Gulf, that was not in a.
The revised map actually has portions of the Great Gulf project, and it also has the affordable housing site, and it also has the area by the new town hall, and I just, you know.
So expanded.
Doing that 1B doesn't preclude us from applying for 1A, it's just Rutland Regional is requesting that all towns that are interested go forward and with the request for 1B.
I'm going to make a motion for the chair to sign the municipal request for tier 1B area designation. It only calls for one person signature.
Can I get a second? Second from Ricky? Is there, is that, if you want to catch up? Is there, is that, did one catch up? Is that, that's, that's all?
Yeah. If you have any questions on it.
I'm not seeing anything else, so, uh, can I, the motion is on table to have the chair sign the tier 1B designation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Nope. All right, I will sign that.
What is it?
Oh, right there.
Marked it off and sticking it up for you.
You marked where I got, write my name. Say the 23rd? Yep.
Yes.
Do you need, you don't need to sign it?
I don't need to sign that one.
Just the chair needs to sign it.
Okay.
Cool, thank you guys.
Will doesn't trust me with that one.
That is fair. That means moving on to, moving on to the next item, KPA art display discussion. I'm guessing Beth, that's what you're here for?
Yep.
Excellent. Come on out.
Moving along.
Hey, so Beth Sorandia representing the KPA. I'm here looking for support for a proposal of a art installation at the Welcome Center. And basically, for a little background, because there's more members now on the select board. So the KPA has a beautification committee, and so for years, we're always trying to come up with different projects that are going to make, you know, coming up the Killington access road and just being in the Killington area. Just more beautiful. Sorry, word there. For tourists and for visitors, we just want to, we have the funds to do a project, like every couple of years. So, for example, the covered bridge next to Casey's was something that was facilitated by our group. And if you've seen, like, next to Charities, there's a skier, that, that sort of thing. And like the little pocket park near Moguls, things like that. So the next thing that we talked about that we'd really like to do is having basically a photo spot at the Welcome Center that has a sense of arrival when you get to Killington, and it basically just says you're here, and represents the skiing culture by having basically a sculpture made out of skis that's going, and a lot of the skis have been donated, they've all been donated, and some of them have been donated by members of the community that have either passed, or we also have some just people that have been, you know, in our community that will be recognized. And we're gonna have plaques to honor them. So the initial, um, project basically looked like this. So it's the word Killington, and those letters are each about three feet high, and then the whole thing was about 25 feet long. We have, we have a backup, we have a couple of different possible ways this would look, but to give you, uh, we did like a prototype of the first letter, the K, and then the O is gonna be a heart. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Would those be on the ground, or would they be elevated?
So it's gonna be elevated because of the snow.
Yeah.
So like the dimension of, of the letters selves are three feet, but the, they would be about 10 feet high off, like the top of it would be at about 10 feet, because we wanted to be higher on the ground.
So you could stand under it, and it would say Killington.
Sort of, yeah, sort of. And then, what was the, oh yeah, just wanna make sure everyone saw the whole, that's the whole thing. We do have a backup if it's not going to, you know, because we're still in the developmental phases. And it's basically, we're looking at trying to put it, sort of if you're facing the Welcome Center, it's to the left. So you're not standing in the street, it's like you're standing right in front of the Welcome Center. So that's basically where that would be going. We're just looking for the support of the select board. We're going to have, you know, go in front of Vtrans, it is close to the road. We're not quite sure if we're in the right of way or not, and they're actually going to be coming out tomorrow to look at that and kind of get that piece figured. But basically, we'll have to apply for a permit for an art installation from the state. So we would, you know, it would need to be approved by the town as well.
So, I met with Beth last week, and we went over the application for this, and it does say that the governing body needs to like do a resolution. So if you guys make a resolution at the meeting, we can certainly type something up that reflects what you said and have that ready for Vtrans.
Is the resolution a motion, or is it?
Well, you'd better make a motion to, like, draft a resolution to support the art project.
And what would you need us to do?
Approve it and sign it at some point.
Okay.
And you guys could do like what you just did and appoint the chair to sign it.
I mean, aren't we looking for a letter of certification for, for the KPA to move forward with this project? Because we don't really know what, because it came, it came in front of Lisa first, and it came to me, and we're not really sure of what size or anything at this point.
Right, and we can scale it, we can scale it down.
Right, it was 200 square feet.
Right.
And I'm all for this, but when it came to, as a zoning administrator, we only allow 96 square, I think, on Route 4. And-
I think that the first issue, that one issue came up, is it a sign or is it an art installation? And I think there's-
We don't have anything for art.
Right, but Vtrans does have a process for approving art installations on their right-of-way. And so if it is within their right-of-way, they can approve it as an art installation. And as part of that, they would be looking, they would need a municipal resolution.
Right.
I think that's-
And, and Vtrans allows up to 150.
For signs, but they're, right.
For a sign.
Is there a limit on art installations?
Well, each one is gonna have to go in front of, if it's, this is because it's on Route 4.
Right.
Okay? So it's not really, you know, the Killington Road, because that's not a Vtrans road. Some of the projects Beth has mentioned was done underneath previous boards, not on it, or previous zoning administrators, and they never really came forward for a permit for those. Don't know how it happened, but it's greater than whatever amount of years. They're there, no one's complaining about them, it's done.
And, and it was-
KPA is trying to do it the correct way and going. So I'll make a motion that-
Vtrans is asking for a resolution from the governing body, that is in the application.
Well, so who is going to write the resolution?
That's like, that's what I'm wondering, is can we ask?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion for the town office to designate somebody to write a resolution supporting the KPA's art-
Yeah.
-project, okay?
For us to sign.
For us to sign.
Yep. Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll just sign it when it's ready.
Maybe the next meeting.
Yeah.
Could be the next meeting, or it could be, just tell us when it's ready.
Yeah.
That's one of the ones we can-
We, yeah.
We can go do that whenever. Yeah.
Cool. I think that sounds like a great idea there.
Thank you.
And that K looks beautiful.
All right, next is White and Burke, amendment to contract for consulting services.
So White and Burke were doing project management work before I got here on a lot of the projects up on the hill here. And when, there was a point where we felt like we could, we could take over, Abby and I and Lisa and whoever else we're dealing with. Abby has started to do more of the financial work on the project, so we decided to talk to Stephanie again to see if she'd wanna come back on a limited basis to help us out. And she agreed. We did say we wanted to make sure that things were, you know, transparent, so we asked that we could bring this amendment to the board for approval. It's signed by the town manager, but we would just like to keep it in the public eye that this is what we're doing. So if you look at the scope of services, it's kind of similar to what Lisa was just saying with DNK on the, on the raised grant, you know, project consultant, legal coordination, funding collaboration is needed, discussing with funders, regulators, property owners, press and residents as needed, any other work to be identified by the town.
Are you looking for any kind of motion, or is this you just informing?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion for the town manager to sign the contract for consulting services, amendment number two with White and Burke.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, is, is this all with, is this TIF?
It's all in TIF.
Yeah, it's all TIF.
She's a subcontractor.
Yeah, that's all, okay. So all in favor of motion of the town manager sign the contract amendment with White and Burke?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any abstain? All right. Approved.
Thank you.
All right, next item is DW, I'm sorry, I meant to ask, I will be better about looking at the audience. DW SF Loans Update Authorized Representatives.
So this is just part of the, the State Revolving Loan Fund for Drinking Water. We do have to do appointment of alternative authorized representative, and Abby and I were hoping that you would approve Abby and I to be the authorized representatives.
I'll make a motion for Dave Hatherton, or I'm gonna say the town manager.
Yeah.
And what is Abby's public works?
Public Works Director.
Works Director.
Yep.
To be the appoint, appointed of the alternative authorization representatives for the water infrastructure financing programs.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it?
I don't think, if you want him as alternate, because right now I'm, I'm the signatory, and I think you want Dave and Abby to be primary.
So it's appointment of-
This is of alternative authorization.
Yeah.
This is what the form I have.
It doesn't matter.
To act as the alternative authorized representatives of the applicant. So we're, we're basically representing the town of Killington.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor of appointing town manager and public works the alternates for the water infrastructure?
I think you do need to point names too, because if it switches, they'll have to do this all over again.
Okay.
Why is that town manager?
Yeah, right.
Right. Are you saying you need names on it, or no?
That's how it's written on the, on the authorization form too.
All right, well, the town manager is Dave Hatherton, and-
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Stained? Eddie, pass please. And signing this one?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm gonna leave room for you up top there, big dog.
I'm gonna sign under yours then. All right, moving now. We're doing, next item, Enmin Kesslering Amendment for Work Authorization.
So this is a, I'm looking at Will too, because I think he was part of this one, the Richardson Road Culvert. Was this one for you? Okay. So this is just a, enter into amendment to, to design, and it says meetings, communication, topographic surveys, hydraulic assessment, structural valuation, design services, permitting, bid phase and construction phase services. They would be the engineers on that project.
Make a motion to allow the town manager to sign a Enmin Kesslering Consulting Contract for Richardson Road Culvert Replacement Amendment to work authorization.
This is part of FEMA, so we will see some reimbursement on this.
Can I get a second on the motion?
Second.
Second, Ricky. Any questions on it? No?
Let's make this easier.
All right, all in favor of-
Actually, I got to sign it, not you guys.
Of the amendment to, yeah, it's our Richardson Road Culvert Replacement Amendment in us authorizing work. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Thank you. You guys don't get to sign this one.
You don't sign that one?
No.
That's Dave, that's town manager.
All right, next up is paving bid correction.
All right, I have to, I have to apologize, I screwed up at the last meeting, and, and actually, Rick, Ricky caught it like the next day, and he's got my calculator out and realized I screwed up. So in front of you are the bid paving results from our, our, our bid, and I broke it down, and I have the information attached to it that I was asked to present this as the three projects being one bid together. And as you can see, Pike Industries is the apparent low bidder by around $20,000, so.
First, I'm gonna make a motion to withdraw the last motion preapproving Will paving for the paving for upcoming year.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor of removing or revoking the prior motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Next, I'm gonna make a motion to approve Pike Industries $773,015.55 for the paving bids.
So can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
All in favor of approving Pike on those bids for that amount?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Stained?
Nope. If you guys get any calls from Will, I will take the heat for all of them, so.
I think this happened last year, Dave.
Okay.
On another bid.
Was it, wasn't it?
But that time, they came in wrong.
Yeah.
They forgot a couple thousand tons or something.
You know, I was looking at one road that was the biggest one, and I just, it was, there was too much-
I'm just saying, they made a-
Been there. I apologize for making the mistakes.
They think, they thought they've had two contracts in a-
I forgive you.
Oh, it was, thanks.
It was the same, but that one was their mistake.
Okay, good. Next item is Culvert Replacement Bid.
Okay, so I actually have all of the original bids sitting down here on the floor, but we do have a bid tally result here, so.
I like these, by the way.
We have to do them anyway. So this, I'm just holding these up just so folks can see, so, I don't know, like everyone can read this writing from back there, but, so we had a bid go out for River Road Culverts, which was, I think, about 900 feet of culvert, if I remember correctly, somewhere around there. It's a lot of culverts.
10 culverts, is it?
Yeah, it's a lot of culverts.
Most of them are probably 40 or 60 feet long.
A lot of culverts down there, a little bit of water down there. And then we had one for Rim Road, which was a FEMA culvert, that one. So we'd had to do it in two separate bids. We did have five bidders for each project, not the same five. The apparent low bidder was KT Hathaway LLC. They came in at $84,000 on River Road and $13,000 on Rim Road. And I do have all of the bid results, if anyone cares to see them.
I'll make a motion to move forward the lower bidder.
Can I get a second?
On the, is this on Rim Road culverts and River Road?
So Hathaway got the bid on both of them, yes.
Can I guess, so it's for both of them, you're doing it?
Yeah.
Can I get a second for the low bidder on both, which would be Hathaway?
I got a stain from this one.
You got a stain?
Yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All right, any discussion?
So is there gonna be conflict time-wise with these two projects?
No.
No?
Okay.
Okay. No, it's a pretty tight schedule for River Road, but we know we're gonna work with them a little bit, weather permitting too, and when pavers show up, so it's kind of the nature of the beast, unfortunately, but.
Where is KT Hathaway located anywhere?
Northfield, I believe.
Oh, you're right here?
Yeah, I'm right here. Okay, sorry.
And I actually had one proposal on this for you guys. So this project was bid with alternating traffic, so flaggers. If you guys would allow the road to be closed between 6:30 and 4:30 weekdays. Okay.
That's what, I'm not actually-
Well, number one.
Hold on, hold on. We have all the rec facilities down there.
The bid was put out as the bid. And if we're gonna now change that you shut the road down all, so you get it done faster, then we have to put it out that way to everybody.
That's a significant change.
Yeah, that's a pretty-
There's a line saying you can negotiate with any bidder, so.
Yeah, it's a pretty busy road, and all the rec stuff's down there, and they have to-
You have to, you have to, you have to approve this one. If they wanna have that discussion, they have to, we're not here to-
Okay, we have Will approve it, and you can have any discussions with the town.
With that, we're just here to do the lowest bidder.
This is on the dirt side, right?
No, this is on the paved side, this is the reclaim and pave.
Oh.
Culverts on that side, that's why. The dirt side might be easier.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was thinking.
The paved side is, I think, is too, the town clerks are still down there, so.
Transfer station to get from either direction?
It's a $12,000 savings.
We're just here to approve.
So the motion on the floor is to approve KT Hathaway on both projects. Can I get a, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All abstained, or all opposed? No, all abstained?
Yeah.
One abstained.
Now you can talk to the town hall over there.
You are permitted to talk to them and figure anything out. Hey, maybe you can do night construction.
Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
What does Markowski know that we don't know?
You do need flaggers on that, Rose, you can't just have, I mean, it's-
All right, coming back to it.
Yeah, I mean, not to mention, there's a ton of traffic on that road that goes up to the-
Bring us back in, bring us back in. Now, we're, next one up is financial reports, FY '26 budget review and discussion.
So I just wanted to put the FY '26 budget in front of all of you. We don't, we can have discussed if you want, but I wanted you to see the numbers, because we're only a week away from it, just so you have them. And so, and Mona did put a percentage number on it, now that's from budget to budget from FY '25 to FY '26. So that's what was budgeted and voted on. And obviously if someone has questions, great, but I just wanted you guys to get this in front of you so you have it, like, because the budget numbers won't change through the year.
I just have one small question, actually, and maybe it's an easy answer, but I just was wondering on the post office, why when it's budgeted at 72, it's come in under each time, actually, the actual on that?
So I'm gonna take a guess on that one. So I not only, I just discovered this today, like, there was a list of like, kind of things in the works before I got here, and one of them was the getting the tax bill to the post office was, I guess, something that was, there was a little, I don't know, there was some conflict with it. So we, I know we dealt with it, how long ago, a month ago maybe? So that, that might be the case, Rick, I don't, I'm not really sure.
Just was curious, I mean, it just seemed odd to me that, I mean, I would think that you know what you're paying upfront, that that's what it would actually come in as, you know, instead of coming in lower, so that was my question.
$72,000 is the rent on the building for the year? Property taxes, but it's the rent, and we didn't have a full year that one.
Yeah, but this year's the same way, Jim, actually.
Then it's a billing thing, it's supposed to be X amount of money. It's supposed to be, I think, $6,000 a month times 12 months.
What page on, Rick?
First one, we can't mind it.
I got it right here. Other income, that were, post office rental, so that just says rental. So it looks like actual in '24 was 65, it was budgeted for 72, so yeah, it's running five grand less. That might be, that might be the taxes right there.
No, it's not the taxes.
That'd be the rent.
It's the rent and it's, I think whoever put it in, the town manager previous than the last two, or three, okay, had it down at 6,000 and I think it leveled up at some point coming up now, but someone would have to go look at the contract.
Take a look at the contract, see what it says.
But it's supposed to be $6,000 a month, so that's where you get the 72 from?
Yeah, let's make sure that we're not missing a month or it didn't just get put in. Do you know off the top of your head the, why the dues for the office are so high? Would be, again, this, we don't-
What page are you on? On revenue?
Managing municipal, no, this would be an expense on page four. It was a budget at two, it's up at 10.
Wow.
Yeah.
Well, it was, looks like they spent 10 this year and budgeted for 2,500 for FY '26.
That's what I was wondering, there was-
We can look at that, maybe something got posted wrong there, that's not a big deal. We'll look that one up. Yeah. Excuse me, that looks like something might have been posted incorrectly, that's-
I have a few questions going back on revenue. Okay, so for, well, simplest ones, for fiscal year '25 taxes, right now you're showing $113,000 shortfall. Do we have an accounts receivable that we know where we will wind up with, okay, when all the money's collected? Or are we gonna, or is it a real shortfall?
Well, we know why it's there, I mean, our checkbook is good right now, but we have, it was because of, there was a loan that was paid off.
No, yeah, not, yeah.
As far as the budget itself, if you just subtracted that out, we're still in good shape.
This was taxes in terms of revenue that we've collected.
There must be delinquent taxes out there.
Yeah, that's why I was wondering if we had a accounts receivable that we could look at to try to figure out where we think that number's gonna come in. And the reason I say that is because your budgeting over, your budget increase is $600,000 over the, you know, for the following year, okay, so if, yeah.
So your budget for '26 will be based on what was voted on in March for the budget. So that I think, was that 7% increase, Jim, does that sound right?
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at the back page, it'll say, so that would have reflected the revenues as what you would be bringing in. Taxes, I mean, you can kind of figure 10%, you gotta collect anyway. We just sent delinquent letters out a week ago, we're actually sending another batch out right at the end of the fiscal year, and it's going to the town attorney.
When this says period 12, it's not over yet.
No, I understand it's over, but one of the things though, we have a budget for fiscal year '26, okay? A budget is a, this is what we think we're gonna spend, okay, it's not, and that was a dart that was thrown at the board when the budget was put together. We now really have to figure out, what are we really going to spend and how can we forecast that out going through for fiscal year '26 so that we don't spend the budget and we can reserve some money back to the town and ultimately back to the taxpayers?
I don't know if you'd be going back to the taxpayers, I mean, you don't normally do that.
It would save them from a future increase if it goes into a reserve fund.
We'd wanna end the year either even or, you know, with something to put in our rainy day.
Yeah, unlike no carryforwards this year and carry, we're actually carrying expenses forward into 2026.
Pan down taxes for the previous or the following year is not a great, like a start.
Well, I'm just, as I say, I'm just looking at that to try to understand, you know, the reality of where, yeah, we have a budget, okay, and we understand what, we understand the budget's been approved by the taxpayers, but from a reality standpoint, is this what we're anticipating we're gonna collect?
So, well, that would go out when the tax bills go out, so you'd set your tax rate based on what your budget was, and then you've got your state thing. We have had lots of discussions in-house with everybody that we're, we gotta tighten up in FY '26, because I don't wanna see it. Personally, for me, I can't end a year, you know, in the red. And I think with the increase that's in the budget for, you know, that was voted on in March, and we continue to do the path we're doing right now with, you know, I mean, Whit and Craig and I have been talking about things and stuff, you know, I think we can, I think we can get there.
I really do.
Yeah, yeah, because I, when I looked at it, I, by the way, I do think you can.
I mean, there's some stuff in here that I already, so I'm like, well, you know, that's an easy one to deal with or whatever.
Finance, adding headcount of staff accountant, okay? The good, town clerk, actually, we eliminated an assistant town clerk.
Well, not necessarily.
Well, it says it in the budget.
So another thing I would like to see.
So what's real?
They, well, there's a, there was a position in the clerk that was a 10-hour position, and I don't know, I wasn't here for the budgets, so I couldn't tell you what was-
And Dave, I underst-
Oh, I know, it's-
I understand, it's not, it's not your budget, and I totally understand it.
I'm not saying that anymore.
No, no, but you didn't put it, how should I say this? You didn't put it together, you don't necessarily know all the assumptions, and I totally understand that. What I'm talking about is can we put a process together to bring some validation to it?
So one of my concerns, and this is the big concern for me, and I don't wanna see our revenue lines inflated to make our expenses look better. And I see some departments where that might have happened, and you know, I'd rather see us tighten that up so we can see how things are trending, because it's just gonna make our budget that much tighter to know exactly where we're at. And when you, you know, I'd rather see us go high on our expenses than higher on our revenues, because if that revenue line doesn't happen, we're, now we're short, you know, that's, now we're anticipating money coming in that isn't really coming in, so. Yeah. I think there's, I think there's hope this year that we can actually come out, and like, the next time this year, we'll be having a different conversation, I hope.
Well, the conversation I'm trying to have is how can, how can we put in place a process so that we have some visibility? We can do some forecasting so we can actually see if we're gonna get into a problem. We can actually see, are we gonna be, bring a surplus back to someplace, or are we gonna go over again this year? Because without, without some measure of forecasting, we really don't know where we are.
Yeah, one thing that I would like to see, and I was gonna bring this up later, but I think it actually fits in here, is to create an org chart, so we have who's, like, department heads, where you are, like, have an actual, physical org chart, and then have the director level be submitting costs on a, like, we do it by periods, 13 periods, so, you know, period by period, so that when we do get these reports, we have an accurate report as we're going, we don't get hit with all these sounds of like, oh, by the way, we, you know, we didn't put the gas in yet and that took, or we didn't-
So, and we've talked about that, you know, that like, we don't wanna see adjustments made this time of the year for-
Right.
And I don't see that happening with a lot of stuff, I know we had a couple departments where we just were concerned about some things, but even like Mona and I were talking today about cleaning up, like, just that line that, and Craig and I talked about one in the, for wages in the fire department, it's just, we can't even figure out why, what's going, so we're gonna work on that. Yeah, I guess, you know, the term being fiscally responsible is what we have to go to, and so one, another thing that I like, and I think they've been doing this anyways, department heads get their budget, so basically their pieces out of this, you know? One thing I like, and I think you guys code them anyway, right, you use all this, so they're coding it so they know what, what line it's going to in their budget. You know, they're seeing their budget every week, I believe we're doing it. So, every month, so we could, we could even make them, it's a sheet usually, you know, that those guys would know where they're standing. Yeah, right, that helps a lot to see right exactly where they are all the time. I've, I mean, I've used that a few times and that's pretty, pretty helpful. And making them aware of it too, like, that's why, like, coding it through the departments and not just going to Mona and her doing it. You know, they know exactly what line they're spending their money from, so. I think we can put some things in place and just keep revisiting it through the-
Yeah, I know you're talking to police and fire, because there's headcount assumptions that were made, you know, so I, I mean, that's understood.
Really, they save the budget this year.
Yeah, no, yeah, right, yeah, no, that's understood, so.
I mean, all around, you know, we can do some things and just, you know.
The other thing that looked odd, okay, was the employee benefits.
Excuse me.
And the ratios looked really weird versus past budgets. So I don't, I mean, and there could be some expenses that you know about in the benefits.
I'm gonna just throw a dart at the wall on this one and say, you know, if you had someone that went from a single plan to a family plan and insurance, one thing I would like to see with the benefits is that those benefits actually go in the department. So like, you know, I'm gonna pick on Whit for a minute, you know, like, how many, what do you have, three? Right, three totals, so you've got the Bennys and the insurance and everything and the weight, all that in that department, so it's a true statement of what that department's spending, you know, having it kind of out in the weird, I mean, it all equals out in the end, but I think it gives a better representation, really.
I wasn't even looking at the increase.
Yep.
I was looking at the ratios between the line items, okay, which seemed like they were strange.
What page on?
Well, I'd be on that, towards the end, yeah.
I'm like the only one here not wearing readers, right?
Yeah, well, I just realized that the printed version that I have didn't have that page.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't wear readers. I'm almost there. All right, employee benefits, yeah, so. 13.
It's like 13, yeah.
Right at the bottom. So which one are we looking at?
No, I just looked at the ratios in general, and I thought that they were looking like they didn't-
From actual to actual, or?
Well, if you look, well, if you look at from actual, hold on, let me, let me get it up.
All right, because health insurance has gone down, but social security-
Yeah, right, yeah, health insurance has gone down by 20%, social security's gone up by 43%, okay? It's just, I look at a ratio like that and I'm saying, what?
So there could have been someone that came in that doesn't get health insurance, I know we've had a couple new people within the year in the highway department.
Yeah.
Like, maybe their spouse has it, so that could have done it, but you'd still have to pay the, the rest of the deductions out of the payroll, so that could be one. What's it off by, like, $40,000, $35,000?
Yeah, it's up, yeah, yeah.
We've had some fire department people.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably two.
And in fact, the employee benefits looks like, budget wise, they're down, okay, they're, and they're up, like, if you do actual versus budget, they're up like $50,000, but it was the ratios that just stuck out to me. And I'm, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, you know, if that's a risk, okay, that we knew about it.
That could easily be someone who changed their insurance plan. Kind of like the quick, and just the dumb out, seems like that could have happened too.
Are you guys budgeting for like, well, you weren't here, so, but is your method to budget for the actual of the benefits? Or is it to say like, you know, we're assuming everyone's on a family plan?
I would like us to be a little more, like, not everybody, yes, heavier on it, because you, because unfortunately, health insurance changes January 1st, they're still calendar year, we're, you know, we're fiscal, so we've gotta almost plan 18 months ahead.
Right.
To do, to do the budget, so you kind of, and what have we had for increases lately, 12% for, I mean, it's been crazy with health insurance. So to have kind of on the high side for that, it's just that, you know, it's kind of a bummer, but.
You didn't do this for everybody being a family plan?
Yeah.
As I said, it was just the ratios, it wasn't the exact numbers.
Yeah, no, that's a good one to look at, so, yeah, we'll be looking at these things too, and so.
I don't think we're gonna have any motion on this.
No, I just wanted to get the numbers in front of you.
There's not a final one.
No. Any questions? All right. Thank you for the financial report, AP warrants, town and golf.
So I know that Mona had emailed these to you guys over the weekend. You do have a golf warrant for $18,432.76 and another one-
For us to approve the golf warrant for the dollar, not the DHS.
Excuse me.
$18,432.76.
And then you also have one for $880.53.
Let's do this one first, can I get a second on the golf warrant, second? Any questions on this? No, all in favor, pass the, or pass the warrant?
Aye.
Aye. All right, opposed?
Another warrant for the golf course for $832?
No, $880.53.
Okay, make a motion to approve that?
For $833, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And there's one more.
One more than town one?
So there's one, this is from like, the, apparently, I don't know if it, it didn't get signed at the last, but the, one of the main, it must have been the June meeting, because it was, so this was for the golf course, yeah, it must have been, because it only had three names on it. So Mona noticed these today, for $2,884.79, but it must have already been approved.
Make a motion for Ricky I and Patrick to sign.
Yeah, here, those are the other three. You don't sign, no, that goes to, this is the three, only sign the one that has your name on it, please.
Hey Dave, are these, oh, there's, yeah, these are two separate.
Yeah, they're all separate, so we gotta do the same thing for that, I have no idea why they weren't signed.
That was the first week they weren't even.
So when we're trying to make the transition over from, okay. Okay.
Do we have one more for the town?
Hold on, so we have town ones. Yeah, excuse me. So do you want me to just read them off like I just did, does that seem the easiest way to do it? So the warrant for this week that's, we have for the invoices is $225,000, $225,523.
So moved.
Can I get a second? Second, any questions, discussion on this? No? All in favor passing this, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Nope, all right.
So this is the one from the last meeting, so that one, I don't know why that didn't get signed.
We already made a motion to sign it.
So that's just signed by the five, and the rest of them I can-
This was from last, come on.
We motioned that last-
Yeah, we motioned it two weeks ago.
The only, hold on, I'm gonna get this all right here for a minute. That's, right, because, so that one was the only new one, because that was the only one that was in our email. I have, right, so, yeah, and we have payroll and payroll. So those need to be signed by everybody. And then I'm gonna just hand you guys this, so this is payroll and stuff from the, from the meetings that didn't get signed. I don't know what's going on with me, I started smoking or something.
Non-smoking ban.
It's crazy, all of a sudden, this weekend, I start coughing.
Don't be dropping down.
That's payroll. That's payroll.
Want to go through the process again?
Basically, we're just cleaning it up so the auditors don't yell at us for not signing things. Right? Those are just, those are all just for the three. So you and Bill can't sign any of those in the gray folder.
Mona and Bill will sign.
You sign this one.
Give us twenty bucks, we'll let you sign it, though.
Then you're gonna have to sign that.
We'll just have to put it in the, we'll have to put it in the in the revenue line and the budget.
Yeah, right, in your revenue.
That's right. We could probably use it. I mean, just saying. Uh-oh, someone else is coughing now, too.
He started it.
The accident checked in. Legionnaires' disease.
Don't even joke about that, Jesus.
AP warrants.
Cool. Do we have any more warrants, anything?
No, we are all caught up now.
We are to second citizens' concerns. We'll go into the community for about here.
Ray, go ahead.
And just remember to state your name and then then whatever.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ann Kirby and I'm a property owner. And I was running this idea by Jay at the transfer station the other day about an incentive for composting. And I listened on the radio and they were talking about in Europe that they have an incentive for recycling. That doesn't seem to be a problem here. But how they resolved it was having scratch tickets at the ultimate end of if you perhaps get a card with punch holes on it for maybe thirty or forty. It doesn't have to be, you know, something like a huge scratch ticket. It could just be a dollar or two dollars. But the incentive is kind of fun in there for people to start composting. I mean, Jay's probably the only one who knows which families are coming in there and not composting and just throwing their trash in, which is too bad because it does become a problem for bears and people's trash as well. So that's my idea just to throw out there. Okay.
Um, but we'll put on the agenda if you can, ask maybe I see the look at it as the dunker.
The camera's making decisions.
Kind of a better idea. If you could just give the town manager or Jay like more of a format, how it would work.
Yeah.
Throw up a scratch ticket. I I don't care, you know.
Yeah, we can put on future agenda, talk about it.
Okay. It's it's not like I'm trying to make money. I'm just trying to give it to you guys. Okay.
Appreciate that.
What we made for you is due to the town.
Yeah.
Right, right.
No, it's, um, thank you for the, I like that. Um, just, yeah, if you could.
Okay, I'll type it up and I'll I'll send it to to Dave.
Take a further look at it.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
Great.
Uh, any other in the room? Yes?
Jan Rich, I just wondered if we could get an update on the town hall.
Update on the town hall?
On the town hall, yeah.
On the new one?
Yeah.
Sure. Actually, I just.
Haven't heard about it in a while.
So I did have it in my town manager report. I don't know if we'd get there tonight. So we've moved in the town administrative side, so like Lisa and Mona and and all of us and Abby, we're upstairs. So because upstairs is pretty much done.
The door is in the back, that one.
Right. So downstairs, the vault was installed last month. Russell is starting renovations the week of July seventh. It should go a little quicker because we have eliminated the staircase for now. We're gonna look at maybe doing a lift or something later if the board wants to do that. So we should be in, Peggy and Monica should be there before the end of the summer. That's the plan.
So, yeah, if you haven't, go check it out. It's very nice, bright, second floor at least.
It's a little warm in there right now.
Except for my half, that's my city.
Much darker.
Miserable.
That one's a base fire.
Yeah, I know. We gotta bring it back.
Mary, for long, um, how are, how is the town hall going to meet ADA requirements if you can't get from one level to the other level?
So because the second floor is ground level at out back and there's actually already like access, so you can drive a car up and actually walk in at ground level. So we did meet with the state fire safety marshal Josh Maxim and we've already went over it with them and it does meet it because it does have ground level access out back.
Well, I think it meets the fire marshals, but I don't think it would meet the ADA people in Monpelia.
Well, because it's because it's ground level.
You couldn't hire a handicapped person or even a person who broke their leg would have trouble if they had to get from the first floor like as a lister needed to get downstairs, they'd have to go outside in the winter. So I think you could be in big trouble on that.
The division of fire safety is, does enforce the ADA rules. That's who enforces, that's who does it. There is a ramp on the back side. And then also, it is that if someone is coming into the clerk's office downstairs and the clerk's office has a handicap ADA section with the countertop, that if somebody from upstairs that works for the town needed to go over there to see them, they could. Now, I understand what you're saying, Mary. If an employee has to go back and forth, but you know.
Right. And so originally, the the plans were to put a staircase in to go from the first floor to the second floor.
That would help.
Exactly. So we'd rather, we'd rather take a step back on that and plan to put a lift in instead than then there would be.
But that would say that that's not covered in the current budget because a lift would be.
Might be the same cost as stairs.
It might be, actually, because we are, we did some value engineering with the contractor than last month or two and we have dropped the total cost down quite a bit, by like seventy-five or eighty thousand dollars. So I I know from doing this in the town office before, the lift was sixty grand to put in. So.
Challenging.
So.
I I'm just shocked that that Monpelia would approve that.
Because it does have ground level in the second floor. And I'll tell you, it was Brandon where I did it the last time, the same thing, because we were worried about it. And they said, you don't need to really put a lift in because you are accessible. The second floor was ground level in the back. Very similar situation. So.
Okay.
But good question, great question.
So what is the timeline for the completion of the new town hall and when will there be some signage, please?
Um, we're talking about signs. We've only been in there for ten days. So we're talking about signage right now. We've got a quote from someone that was a little, little high. So we're gonna get some more quotes for signage. August, I think we're looking at the completion day. I mean, that's Russell's is starting in a week. So depending on how quickly they go, I mean, like the vault's in. So that was the big, the big part. The rest of it's just interior renovation at this point.
I think there's.
Couldn't just print a banner and put it out by the roadside next to the signage?
Linda and I've been, Linda and I've been working on trying to get this sign. I mean, well, it'd be nice to just, we're gonna spend money on a banner. I might as well spend money on getting something that looks somewhat decent. So they've got a lot of, there's a lot of new things. You can do them with like the foam board now that look like real signs. So we've got, we've got a couple other ideas.
All right. Any other questions in the room? Nope. All right. I'm gonna go to questions online. Are there any questions online? Seeing none. All right. Uh, gonna move to select board member comments and or concerns. Anyone in the room? Go around. You have anything?
No.
Good.
How about all the issues we discussed?
Jim?
Good?
Good.
Good. Uh, I had a few. Let me get them.
So I have one, uh, someone asked me if we could have, and this is, I'm not sure if it's the town manager or handled by the Alpine Board, but I think that town manager's part of it, look at the operating cost of the pipeline versus what's collected and to see if there's any modification that can happen for the for that. It was, what was relayed to me was that the operating cost is significantly lower than the amount that is collected. And as there's a health, you know, by the person that talked to me, their their opinion, a healthy rainy day fund, if we could start adjusting down that thing. Again, that, I don't know who that goes to, but I'm relating.
So are we, there's supposed to be a.
Is it the board that does that?
There's supposed to be whoever's in charge of it, who's normally kind of front of us from town hall, okay, approving a budget with a dollar amount. And it hasn't been done probably.
Years, yeah.
Okay. But the fee that is being collected is, it's not just an operating, that sewer line is somewhere over twenty years old.
Right, it's a future.
And they have to have money in. And just five years ago, that fund was going. So when someone looks at it and sees there's two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand dollars, whatever, over, some of those pumps, if they go and when they go.
It'll be up there. I know they've been looking at doing, replacing the one that's up on Route Four, just up the hill across, so.
Plus also, when Dave just reminded me, going up Route Four, just past the old Killington Cabinets, if you're heading to Pico on the left-hand side, okay, Vtrans is doing a COVID work in that area somewhere. And I believe that sewer district is going to have to pay to move the sewer line. We probably don't have enough money in that fund to cover that at this point.
Yeah, they've got to remove it and replace it.
Well, thank you for that, guys. Uh, two other ones?
I'll still look into it, though.
Thank you. Uh, I have three other ones. Two of them are pretty quick. Uh, can we just follow up on the swing in the playground? Uh, there is, so there is a swing in the playground that the rubber is all eroded off. Let me get them here.
No one from Rex.
No one from Rex here. Uh, I think, or I was told, one of the playground, I haven't been down there, one of the playground swings is eroded off and it's just exposed metal. And with the heat and the camp kids, there may be some burned, burned warnings. Uh, one of the other thing is when we have the the Fourth of July is coming up, when we trim the grass inside the pool, can we do it with a mower, with a bagger?
I will have to ask Terrence about that. I am.
Just if we.
I could blow it the other, or if we go the other direction.
Yeah. Well, no, it's not that it's going, well, I guess it goes in the pool. It's, if you get out with wet feet, it sticks to you if you're in the grass. Again, that may be a little self-serving.
Was that yours?
That came from my household. It was mine. That was mine. That was mine.
I don't know. I'll see if we have a bagger or if we have.
I don't believe we own such a thing.
We may not have a bagger.
No, we have a blower.
We have blower? Hey, so maybe.
That'd be easy.
Maybe not all the time, but Fourth of July will be a big, you know, that'd be a nice thing. Um, the other thing is, there was just a celebration of life for David Loman, who was one of the children of Killington. Sorry. And they, uh, they are doing a foundation in his name. And so I'd like to make a motion that the town donates, you know, an amount of money. I was thinking a thousand dollars to this foundation come next fiscal year. We don't have to do it right now. I know we've got a lot going on. But he grew up in town, he's part of the town.
I would put it on the agenda item so people know because I'm not gonna make a motion that's not on the.
That's fair.
It would have been something if you, just in future, when you want.
Put it on there.
Amendment.
Put it on there.
You could have, but we need something that.
Can you, Patrick, can you just send me this?
Yep.
Specifics of that and we'll add it to the next.
Absolutely.
Just just remember that there's a lot of people in this town that passed away and.
I understand.
Maybe fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year, keep on doing that or more.
All right.
There's Claude, there's Scotty.
Again, this is being, this is to a foundation.
But they have, there are certain people have foundations and they're fundraisers. Jim Fury has a, has a foundation. Mary started it for her husband and it's funded through other avenues. I think the fire department might have some kind of funding during the Fourth of July party for Fury.
Well, we'll put that on the future.
Maybe that would be a better way of trying to split up something from the, you know, rec or something on the Fourth of July. The Jim Fury certain, the raffles that they do, a certain amount of money goes to, but.
Okay. Yep, we'll put on a future.
Discussion.
Discussion. Um, those are all the items I had. Uh, manager report?
Sure.
I've already written that, so it doesn't matter.
Okay. Um, excuse me. So what Craig and I have started doing some public safety meetings, been working together on updating policies and procedures for the fire department. We're also gonna start drafting job descriptions, requirements for part-time versus full-time firefighters. This has been kind of some, actually has been some contention. So we wanna get something in writing on what requirements are needed for both. Um, the golf course has asked if they could start selling cigars at the golf course. I did apply for the license through the DLC, which will require select board approval at the next meeting. Apparently, this has become quite common at golf courses throughout the country. And actually, the management company that does our golf course has a lot of them in some Midwest states that does it. And I was informed today that the clubhouse actually used to sell cigars years ago. So, um, probably was gonna come to you guys probably at the next meeting and just wanted to give you a heads up, but that's.
Can we do that? Because.
No, that would, so it's a cigar, so we come underneath, is there a class, what would that, how you make class?
The tobacco license.
Tobacco.
Yeah, I've already.
It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be to the town of Killington. It would be to the Sherburne.
Yeah.
Oh, it's the Sherburne Golf.
That's how it's applied for is under, sure, but I have to be the person that applies to it.
Can we vote on it, though? Because we would be the.
We're not gonna get into that. We vote on it.
Just letting you know.
We give ourselves, we give that company a liquor license every year.
Right. All right, fair point. That's the town manager applies for.
Oh, Jesus.
So I already covered the construction of the town clerk's office. So I I just do want to say, because I sense still just a little tension here, like, um, I walked into this town office being in the shape it was. And, you know, Jim and I actually started conversations with Russell's again a few months ago. Um, we were definitely being overcrowded in the town office that's down on River Road. And this was why we made the decision to move part of it up now while we could to use the space. And it's, it's, it was much-needed space and everyone is quite happy with it so far. Um, we're gonna get it done as quick as we can and, you know, we'll work on the signs as soon as we can. And Linda and I, I really have been talking about it, but I mean, we had a quota, it was like twenty-six thousand dollars for a sign. We're like, no, we're not doing that. So we're we're getting there. Yeah. I mean, I know, we probably could just draw one with Sharpies for right now, I guess. So this is something that popped up, um, again, like just trying to fix it, what was, so we negotiated a settlement with New Horizons Communications on leaving their phone contract prematurely. Apparently, this happened last year. I don't know all of the specifics, but I do remember us having to send phones back to them like the first week I was there, I think. The change in providers was initiated sometime last year. There was a clause in the contract that stated if the contract was to be terminated prematurely, the customer would be responsible for paying the remaining term of the contract, which was ninety-two hundred dollars. So was able to negotiate it down to fifty-five hundred. The only other option would be to continue to pay the monthly charge until the end of the contract term, which we would have had to pay the ninety-two hundred dollars. So we did make the decision to, seeing as how we got it down at, you know, almost fifty percent, to, um, pay them off. And then we were told from what I'm hearing from other folks in the office, that this was supposed to be a no-cost transfer from one company to the other. So Linda's been talking with VTEL. It does sound like they want to work with us on this. So hopefully, the next meeting, I can say this ended up costing us nothing. But we figured five grand was better than nine. We get to skip a collection agency and all that wonderful stuff. So we'll see what happens.
A lot better than the, you're paying the two people for one service for three years.
Well, apparently, they were, the town was paying for the the new town office phones there and we weren't even there until two weeks ago. So.
Somebody put them in.
Yeah. So anyway, we're, we're getting there with that. Um, and hopefully, well, VTEL sounded like they want to work with us. So, um, Abby and I are working on new job description for finance director. We're hoping to have it posted early next month. Unfortunately, we'll be losing our rec director at the end of the summer. Emily has taken on a different career path. And she said she'll be here till the end of the summer, till the school year starts. Linda and I have actually started redrafting a new job description for that. Emily gave us a bunch of information to, Emily has agreed to be part of the hiring process, which I think is gonna be huge. Um, I am gonna attend tomorrow night's rec committee meeting to discuss this and see how they would like to participate in finding Emily's replacement. Um, we have had a couple of people call already that we're kind of pre-interviewing just to see if they're fit and, you know, take the next step. So, but, um, yeah, it's a bummer. I've enjoyed working with her for the four months I've been here. So.
Are you aware of the requirement for the school that has to have? Are you aware of the requirement for the school that has to have a-
Yep, yep. So Emily's put me in touch with the principal and we're gonna have that, the three of us are gonna have that conversation too, so.
Is that contractual?
Yep.
So basically, that position became full-time only because of-
Right.
Being, yeah, reimbursed something like twenty-two thousand or twenty-four thousand dollars of the salary from the school.
That's become kind of common because, I mean, like, I'm sure when you guys were all kids too, like, the schools did all the programs and now they just, they don't do them like they used to anymore, so the, the rec departments have absorbed.
Have the school program?
Right.
Yeah.
You'll have to hire somebody on with a degree for four hours a day with no benefits.
Yeah. So, um, I'll keep you guys posted on that, certainly if, you know, a board member wants to be part of the, yeah. So, so, well, I, I, you know, Emily and I, we'll pull a rec committee member and I'll just, whatever.
Alright, thank you for the manager report. Executive session for personnel appointment, employment evaluation, public office employee, provided a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reason for the decision in open meeting, uh, one VSA, three one three, three A, uh, include, to include the town manager. Do you want me in this room? I don't think we are going to include the town manager, it's just gonna be a select board.